Call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge, if you please.
I like to share state.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Machines are talking to us.
I hate that.
Me too. Okay, meeting with Joe Bartlett and Hillary. You didn't get your college thing going, right?
He's outside, we actually are leaving just after this evening.
Enjoy.
And the car was sort of shimmying, so he's like looking for a stick to poke the ice out of the wheels. So, we don't drive fast enough to notice it off the most of them. Okay, so I don't know where you want me to, like, do we want to do everything again? Or do we just present kind of an overview?
Maybe just an overview.
So I'm here with the Polley Meadows Conservation District, my name is Hillary Solomon. We are looking at constructing a stormwater mitigation project in the northern little section of the town green that doesn't have any trees or other infrastructure on it. We would be tapping into a storm drain that runs right in front of the municipal building and collects a lot of stormwater from these blocks to the north of the town municipal building. And it would be treated then in the park, and it would infiltrate and then travel slowly as groundwater to the river instead of being dumped as a point source in a pipe to the river. And it would be cleaned of most of its contaminants. There would be, there's kind of an overflow, the system can only fill up so much. And then, once it's full, like during a heavy, heavy rain event, the water would just continue how it normally does to the river. And I have plans here, if anybody wants to see them, happy to hand those out. Joe is available to talk about sort of the technical aspects of the project. He's the consultant who designed the project. And yeah, we're just hoping for a vote. If we did get a positive vote tonight to move forward, then we would put in an application for a grant. That grant deadline is March 6th, so we would just do that ourselves. And then, if that was approved, and we got to the point where we were putting an RFP out for a contractor, we could do whatever amount of partnering with the town that the town wanted to do so that they felt that they had sort of say in the work and everything has it moved forward.
Questions from anyone?
I mean, we put it on the agenda so that people, if someone in town, so if there's any questions from people here.
I have sets of plans too, if anybody wants to.
I think it's important to note too, that we're kind of, for a change in theory, we're ahead of the curve, that there's a, we're going to be ordered to do something with our phosphorus and that anything that drains into Lake Champlain. So we're just ahead, we're just beating, ahead of the curve, and we're getting money to do it. So it's not costing the town of Fairhaven anything except maintenance cost. If that's the way that, if that's the way it ends up, that may not even.
It's coming from state dollars, and it's not from your taxpayer dollars. It's from funds that are raised from tourists as they come to visit. And the idea is that we keep Lake Champlain clean, and we keep drawing tourists to help our local economy. So it's, hopefully seems like a, like it's sort of a good deal and funded the way it should be.
What will the maintenance cost, what will the maintenance entail? And can we have some kind of an idea of what the town will be responsible for in future?
I think the answer is we, the answer is we may not even do the.
Yeah, so they will automatically qualify for maintenance funds from the same state funding pool of this sort of keeping Champlain, Lake Champlain clean and keeping the tourists and the tourist economy going. So it'll automatically go into that pool, and it's automatically approved. And the state basically signs a 10-year contract with the town saying that they're responsible for the maintenance costs. And then that gets renewed as long as the project's operating, that keeps getting renewed.
I know, I look back at my notes from two weeks ago, and what I put down was it's, you answered our questions, but it's a smaller project, less disturbance, cheaper project. The questions around the water table and everything look good. It looked like the contract, I have something like 10 to 15-year contract, state funding for the project. Maintenance, it looks like is included, and so it looks, that's, I know, sometimes things almost sound too good to be true. Because it's, uh.
We hope not.
It's, it's zero.
I've got a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm assuming this is going to be the empty tank?
Yeah, well, it's not really empty tanks, it's like a grid, it's sort of like a plastic grid.
Okay, so it's plastic.
Yeah, it's like a plastic sort of, like egg.
And this kind of, this like on this green patch right out here?
Yeah, and probably not oriented very well, yeah, the green little triangle right here.
So what would be the structural capacity of this? Because vehicles park there during concerts in the park, I mean, you get three or four vehicles parked on top of this. What is, plus we have farmer's market out there.
Yeah, yeah.
So if people are walking out there, what's the likelihood of their vehicle going swimming?
Yeah, no, so I'll let Joe actually formally answer this, our consultants on the line, but those were questions. So we've come a couple times and met with the town, and that came up. That came up, you know, really quickly. So it is, so we ended up making everything a little bit smaller, like the height of it shorter and more structurally, like more structural integrity. So you can put most, any vehicle out there, the snow can be out there, a fire truck could be out there.
Okay, that's the only thing I was worried about, is like cymbals or something, something like that? Because once it's buried, then it's kind of forgotten infrastructure.
Exactly, exactly.
And I know it's not really great doing due diligence in these projects because we have a wonderful reparking, but.
Keep on the subject and let's stay asking all of it.
Yeah, no, we would hope that, that uses would be the same out there. I think the only thing they were saying is like a loaded, like a fire truck filled with water, kind of like a really, really heavy situation, you might be pushing your luck a little bit, but normal vehicles should be able to be out there.
Okay, thank you.
And Joe, I don't know if you want to answer any of that, that question?
So the, the system, just 25 load rated, and that's, I believe for this particular tank we're going to have either 12 or 18 inches of cover to achieve a load rating. And the more covered you get, better the load rating is, so unnecessarily park a whole one on top of it if you don't need to. But it is load rated to handle heavy load, right up to, you know, short, short of the fire truck full of water. But it should choose a settlement or anything after construction's complete.
Okay, thank you.
Mr.?
Oh, sorry.
This is funded from user fees of Lake Champlain, did I?
Well, so, um, yeah, so some of it's hotel, hotels have the hotel taxes.
Rooms and meals tax?
Rooms and meals tax. It's a little tiny percentage, it's property transfer tax, and a little, and a part of it is the bottle return.
No federal funds?
No federal funds, yeah.
Yeah.
My concern is from the last meeting that Hillary was here was that the town first has to clean out the line. Has, has we gone into thought, process of that litigation process of cleaning that line prior to this operation?
Joe, do you want to answer that one, if you want me to?
So, you know, like the importance of getting the existing storm line on Kinarven cleaned out. So one, you know, like it's not raining very additionally right now. And so because it's not raining well, that means there's going to be a lot of junk stuck in the catch bases and probably in the pipes. And so it'd be really ideal to get the clean down before we install the new, this new infrastructure. Because the last thing we want to do is set a whole, chewed up leaves and sand and just grid into the new system. And so, you know, Hillary and I discussed ways to write into the machine contract, which will be funded, you know, into that contract, for, for the site, and so that can be your role. And, you know, like, might, might some town forethought on that? But the maintenance that, you know, should be done via two, three-year rotation anyways.
Yeah, it's not a complicated process. You see pricing a one truck in town, jetting out lines at least once or twice a year. It probably takes 20 minutes, a half an hour max to jet out a line, so it's.
Yeah, I understand that, but I also know that there's a little tree and a crabapple tree that's been dumping a bunch of debris for the last 40 years into that system.
They can, they'll jet it out in vacuum, it's not, you'll be surprised how easy it comes out.
We were saying we just put it as some, like a requirement of site prep, and then we figure out how to, between us, how we.
How we pass on the vehicle process.
Has that line had a camera put down at, at any point? Do we know anything about the integrity of the existing pipes? Root intrusion, intrusion and stuff like that?
So, so the stormwater will come to a point here, and then we'll put a new line to the system. So sort of whatever's coming already and making it to the river already would come into the system. So I don't know about the integrity of the uphill.
The upstream is unknown.
That would be kind of, and sort of just part of the existing system that needs to be maintained.
It's regularly maintained. The, I'm not sure when, when that was new pipe, but it's new pipe since, in a guessing, sometime early, early 90s or sometime around there. We pulled, I'll never forget it, we pulled a piece of, of the piping out there. It looked like something out of a science fiction novel, it was just, it was, there was pipes going everywhere. It looked like a giant octopus, it was the weirdest thing you ever saw. It worked, but then we went nuke. So it's been new tubing sometime in the 90s probably, but.
And that's all Kinarven new tubing from the 90s?
I think so, I, I, don't quote me on that, but it, it seems like that's when we did it all. It was before we repaved Kinarven the first, the first time that I was on the board, so that was 90s up.
So you're looking for a motion?
I am.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the, what do we call this project?
We call it Fairhaven 06, the Town Green Stormwater Infiltration Project.
You got that?
Yes, of course I do. We, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the Fairhaven.
06.
06 Stormwater.
Mitigation.
Mitigation project?
That sounds good.
Is there a second, Joe Bartlett?
Thank you.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Three?
Three to one.
Three and one, we move forward.
Thank you, I will let you know how it goes on March 6th.
Okay, thank you.
You were no.
You're all.
Thanks, Joe.
Good luck.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Have a, have a safe trip.
Yeah, thank you so much, it's great to see everybody again.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, bye.
Kelly, you're up.
I'm up.
Give us a quick overview of what you're up to and.
Um, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Kelly Donaldson. I brought back in December a proposal to go forward with the Fairhaven Hometown Heroes Banners Project. Those of you that don't know what it is, it is the veterans, some of you have probably been through New York or Bennington, Vermont, and you've seen the veteran banners on the telephone poles. That's what I'm looking to do here. Actually, we've launched it, it is gone, so, it is gone. And I'm excited about it. I, so what we were, there were some questions in the, Joe, I'm sorry, you met the bad side of me for a minute. I'm no longer his favorite Donaldson, but.
That will never change.
Oh, good, um, but.
So who is your favorite? No, no.
Don't go there, it's up for discussion. In your hands you have the official application for the Fairhaven Hometown Heroes Banner Project. It has, we now have our own post office box, we now have our own email, we have our own checking account, we have everything in line. Today, I can tell you while I was at work, I probably got 50 responses. Somebody said to me, oh, we've got plenty of polls. Somebody said that last meeting, I think it was Bob Richards actually.
I got it ruined.
Yeah, I thought so, um, that made me a little nervous. I, I'm glad that there's a lot of response. We will not be, I've talked to the masons, we will not be putting up banners on the poles around the park because that's where they do their flags, and we don't want to interrupt on that. So I did put together a little sketch, I can, it's beautiful.
It was a good sketch.
It was a good sketch, I spent a lot of time on this. So I can pass that around. What you'll see is in the circles is you'll see the poll numbers. It will run a straight line, so we're going to go from Lewis Lane on Washington Street. We will come down, because I didn't know this until the other day, that we only have telephone poles on one side of the road. I didn't know that.
Any?
Yeah, so we will run down one side of Washington Street. We will stop here, there's a pole right outside on the corner of the town office. We will run from Stewart's intersection, and we will go all the way down that side where the flags are not, all the way up to where the Eagles Club intersection is. Um, Academy Street, I'm trying to think of the name of that street, is that right? Academy?
That's correct.
Right where Jay Brown lives. Everybody knows where Jay lives. Um, but anyway, we didn't go any further, it has to stay on a town maintained road. Rose just brought up a good point to me on, number six, banners will be tracked by street name. A list of the locations of banners will be available at the following locations, and then it says, Town Maintained Road only. I will not be putting up a sign or a, or a, a list on every pole saying, this is where your pole is. What'll happen is once we get our first delivery of banners, we'll start dispersing or start hanging. And then I can easily make an Excel sheet that says, Nick Egan is going to be on pole 65 on corner of Lewis Lane. Simple as that. That'll be available for everybody to see. So it's, it'll be pretty simple. Um, I have a committee. My committee will be Joe Donaldson, not junior, but the younger one, and Rich Greenow. We have somebody in the backend doing some secretarial and little stuff work. You did agree to do that, right?
I don't remember that at all.
That was Wednesday night Bingo.
That old story.
That was Wednesday night at Bingo. But anyway, I also had a phone call just before I got here, and somebody said to me, will you be taking donations? If there's somebody that is willing and capable of making donations, we don't want a veteran to go without a banner because their family can't afford it, they don't have living family here, so absolutely. It will be done as Claire Stanley wants Rich to have a banner, and his family didn't want to do it, but she wants him to have it. So we will do a little thing that says, donated by Claire Stanley, or something to that effect.
Or anonymous.
Or anonymous, doesn't have to be said. Question about whether or not, we were talking about town employees being scarce and, you know, hoping to have some help to do this, and you have to be a town employee to hang the banner per the Green Mountain Contract, Green Mountain Power Contract, liability issues. I don't know, and maybe Joe will be able to answer this, this just came to me a half hour before I got here. If we can subcontract somebody for a dollar to use their man left.
Price is right.
Price is right.
If they have to be named an employee, can we put somebody, can you say, Kelly Donaldson's going to be an employee for a day? And then Kelly Donaldson donates it back to the town?
I bet it doesn't have to be that complicated, I don't, I'd like Joe to do some research, but it seems, we subcontract everything. We subcontract, take in all.
So Jake Helm has offered to let us use his man left. Premier Solutions or Premier Roofing, I think it's called, or something like that would do that. He said, if that was something we could do.
Let me check on it.
So, that's.
I don't want to commit to anything and get us in trouble.
I'm not asking you to commit yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be committed.
We will be meeting, I will be meeting with Green Mountain Power either the 24th, 25th, or 26th to go through our poll. Oh, we did run from the corner of South Main up Prospect to where T.W. Ferguson's is as well, just to cover our bases so we don't have to go back out and do this all over. We just made sure we had enough polls right away.
How many does that represent, you know?
A lot. It was really fun in the snowbank to take photos of all of those, and loved it. But people were looking at me funky, but, oh well, happens every time. Questions on the application, did any, yes, Michael?
Top, the banner street name, what's that for?
Oh, banner street name, second page, it's going to be the second page way up here. Once this is completed, I'm going to be able to say, Joe Gunter has a, this is where Joe Gunter's family's, this is, this is my.
Oh, for your.
For my purpose. So that we can, I'll be able to say, I'll be able to pull this application in 10 years and say, oh, I know where Joe Gunter's banner is, right there. It's going to say poll number blah, blah, blah on the corner of Lewis Lane. It's going to be pretty simple.
You keep running Lewis Lane?
Well, that's because I, my very first person was from Lewis Lane.
Oh, Mr. Solomon probably.
Mr. Solomon, yes. So I'm going to, that is, any questions on this? That ends, yes, Rose?
Say somebody wanted to sponsor a veteran, but didn't have a veteran to sponsor, do you have a list?
I can have. Okay, that should be pretty simple at the Legion. I would bet that we probably have veterans that no longer have family in the area or don't have families, period. A lot of deceased, you know, you go look at our memorial over there, and you're going to see a ton of deceased people. You can say, I would like to sponsor one for such and such. I had somebody reach out saying, I've got three brothers, I can't do, I can't pay for three brothers. I'm the only one, that's, and it is a good chunk. I, I agree that $190 seems like a lot of money. However, keep in mind that those brackets are sturdy brackets, we have never had one come down. We had one that was damaged in, or not a bracket, but a banner that was damaged in transition, in, in delivery. Not anything that anybody did, they replaced it. But we haven't had one have hoped to fall, knock on wood, but we've been pretty lucky. And that keeps, our PO box has been paid for by myself until the first one comes through, and I will reimburse myself for the PO box because that's what your $20 administration fee goes through, goes for, to keep that going every year.
Hometown Heroes, does it have to be traceable hometown affiliation?
Um, it should be a Fairhaven resident, or had been a Fairhaven resident. Um, I've had a couple people reach out from Benson, Orwell. I did say that it will be, their banner will be displayed in Fairhaven. But think about it, Benson, Orwell, West Haven, they don't have a Legion or a veteran affiliation in their area. A lot of their family is here, that's how they know about this, because it's out there now and they know that it's a Fairhaven resident. Well, I live in Fairhaven, but dad used to. And don't forget that Fairhaven Line, it goes all the way down to, oh gosh, I can't think of the guy's name, and it's just past Jake's dad.
Oh, that's like right.
It's, it's right there, so you still, even though it looks like Castlepin Balazine, it's not.
I don't believe it.
Thank you, thank you.
If someone wanted to buy a banner for Matthew Lyon, who was a Colonel in George Washington's army, he'd have donated land for the town green, I think he'd probably live in Fairhaven.
He'd.
They could buy that.
Absolutely.
And the Lyon family who lives where in Kentucky or whatever, they don't have to be.
They don't have to be.
They don't have to say, yeah, you're an A.
No, I have people that are out, out of state and saying, I want to have one for my dad who lives. My uncle who lives at the Bennington Veterans Home belongs to Fairhaven Legion, his family is here. This is where his home is, so. And the other thing I do want to point out on here is it does say applicant signature. The only thing I want to bring to your mind is obviously if they're deceased, we can't have a signature. When you're, when you're talking to your veterans about this, I've had a couple people say, well, I want it to be a surprise. Don't be alarmed if you're going to get some veterans that say, I don't want it.
Exactly.
I don't want it. I'm going to ask you that because we need to make sure that we're honoring them, not, you know. I, I, my father is a big person on not having any recognition for anything. And I know if I ask him, he's going to, ooh, what, I'm going to say, too bad. But, um, and a lot of your era now is Vietnam, and they don't want that recognition. They don't want that honor, so don't be surprised.
So if I understand the streets, you're looking to put these banners on, if someone said, I live on West Street, and I'd like a banner on my street.
The answer is no.
I live on Capitol Hill, I think the answer is no, you've got to, your banner's got to.
We take wherever the town puts them. I can't reserve a spot for my father or Rich.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
You cannot reserve a spot, can't have it wherever you want.
So the town decides where?
Basically, it's going to be Green Mountain Power and the town, and, and we're going to be up there with the banners, and we're going to say, okay, here we go, and we're just throwing them up.
My other question is, is there a process for eliminating duplicates?
So if.
Means you know one side of the family, then the other side, and they're fighting, I want to do it?
So my suggestion is, and this, I've talked to my, both of my brothers about this, because I have my son, I have my father, I have my grandfather, we want all three of them up there. Well, there's three of us kids, we're each buying one. If you've got a couple of, you know, your family members, talk to your family, because it's one banner for a veteran. And say to them, this is what we're looking to do. If you've got 10 people, well, great, guess what, you each owe the other for the $19. You know, and, and make it a family thing. Any other questions?
What do you need from us now?
High five? As of today, we have a signed contract with Green Mountain Power.
Oh, yeah.
Woo-hoo, so.
It was relatively painless.
It was, it was so good, it was so good. It was like, that contract went over and my phone was going boom, 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 and I'm like, whoa, what happened? Right now, I'm taking the applications. I would encourage you, if you do talk to people, please encourage them to use the Fairhaven Hometown Heroes email or the Facebook page, not my personal page. And I am not giving out my personal phone number unless I want to give it out.
My only question to the sponsors, like, say like my parents paid for mine, that's who is a sponsor for this?
Yeah, you can, I mean, and, I mean, you've got your parents and your wife, and they might all want to go in on it together.
Mom's already said she's.
And what mom says goes, yeah, I get it. Rose?
You mentioned a $20 maintenance fee.
$20 administration fee.
Administration fee, excuse me. So, is when we first pay for it with $190? So, is when we first pay for it with a hundred and ninety dollars, is the twenty dollars for the initial outweigh in the hundred and ninety dollars?
Yes, it is, everything should be outlined-
Third page.
Third page.
Okay, I missed it.
And that twenty dollars, so it's a hundred and twenty dollars to keep the post office box every year. Because I wanted to have that started right off the bat, I said, I'll just pay for it, get it out of the way. But, so that first check that comes in is gonna pay me back a hundred and twenty dollars. But that does not mean their banner is not covered. Their banner is still covered, because the banner itself is ninety dollars, the mounting brackets are sixty-five, then you have the administration fee of twenty dollars.
So, every year-
We will still-
The sponsor pays twenty dollars?
Nope, not every year, you only pay that twenty dollars once, when you purchase the banner. Every sponsor does, I'm not gonna go back to you in two years and say, hey, I need another twenty bucks, and then, the, it's gonna keep rolling, it will-
It's a one-time fee, unless you have to replace the banner.
Correct, correct. If you have to replace the banner, once that banner comes, once the check is cleared and it's off, that banner belongs to you, doesn't belong to the town, doesn't belong to me, belongs to you, you purchased it. If something should happen to the banner, I go to the family and say, Rose, I'm really sorry, the wind took out, the tree took out, it sliced the banner, do you want to replace it? If you do, then yes, we go to a hundred and ninety again. Does that make sense?
Isn't there gonna be, uh, some excess of monies in that account, won't that be
I have had-
Uh, replace damaged banners?
It can be, it can be, depending on what the damage is. If you're looking at a banner that's been hanging for five years, you're going to expect-
Brackets are still good.
Right.
All right, they have a-
You only have to purchase the banner.
Sixty-five?
The banner itself is ninety. So, you only, if you have to replace, you might have to replace that banner in five years, I'm not gonna tell you that you don't.
If you look, they've, they've held up pretty well in Granville.
Yeah, and Granville takes theirs down, we will not be doing that. New York has a different, um, company than we do, we have Green Mountain Power, they have something else.
Niagara Mohawk.
Mohawk, Niagara Mohawk, or whatever it is. Bennington leaves theirs up year round, because Green Mountain says, no, we're not gonna come in, put them up, take them down, by the time you get them all up, you're taking them down again. So, they leave them up year round. Bennington, this is their second or third year, second year maybe, and they've had no issues, no. So, I mean, it's, I think the company is pretty reliable, they're, you know, they've been pretty good to us, so.
So, they're good quality, you're saying?
Oh, yeah, it's a thick, it's a thick, um, I don't wanna call it plastic, but it's like the-
Vinyl?
Yeah, like a real thick vinyl.
So, judging by your excitement and your exuberance over this, it's becoming quite popular.
It is.
Whereas Fairhaven has a limited amount of polls, I'm assuming that we're going to supersede the poll count, potentially.
I want to tell you, yes, we are going to, it looks like if it keeps going the way it is-
What is the rotation practice, because if you've got fifty polls and a hundred people, win one poll-
When I presented this, we will not be rotating them, if needed. I will go back and I will take pictures of Connerdon Street, Four Street.
So, you're able to acquire more polls?
As long as it's a town-maintained road, we can't go on any state-maintained road.
Okay, all right, I was just curious, 'cause I, I just don't want anybody locked out.
Nope.
I didn't know if we were locked in.
I would like to see, I mean, I'd hate to see it, but I'd like to see us run out of polls.
That would be nice.
Be pretty cool, there's a whole list over there.
There's a lot of bets in town.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Keep doing the good work.
Thank you for your support.
Stop by anytime, tell us what's going on.
Oh, I know, I'm sticking around for a bit.
See ya.
Okay, hang on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Colin. Uh, amendments to the agenda?
I have one amendment tonight, um, I'd like to add the addition of Munger Road to our state, our state map.
G, under new business?
Please.
Yeah, finally. Okay.
This is to include Munger Road?
I'll make a motion to add Munger Road added to the state map under new, new business, G?
Second. Hi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, approval of the minutes, uh, February fourth.
I'll make a motion, go ahead.
Correction, I was not here the last minute.
We'll, we'll get them when we get the second, absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourth.
I'll second that.
Now-
Addition, deletion, correction.
Yeah, I was not here. Give my name from that, please.
I really did notice you weren't here, I just-
Fine.
You're, you're good.
I'll make it during, uh, five minutes, unless Mr. Travers would like to make it one of the board members, that's it, we have to come from a board member to make the amendment.
Was a yes or no answer?
Yes, I'd like an amendment.
Let me get, under five minutes for public comment, Mr. Billwitz, before the meeting, uh, said that, that he, he thought it was summarized too much, um, I, I made a statement before the meeting that there's a tape of this meeting that covers everything, and the minutes, I don't believe we're violating anything by summarizing something as long as everything that was said is captured in the tape. I, that's, that was my two cents.
Technically, all we really have to have is motions.
And, and-
I was gonna say, I don't have to include any of it.
Right.
By the way, you're fired.
I do, I do have a couple, I do have a couple of the things for the, the minutes, on page two at the bottom, under Town Manager Report and Communication, where it says, grants are being paid back and grants were awarded, it, it should be loans are being paid back, and the loans were awarded to local businesses in town, uh, it's just-
Wait a minute, now, where is that?
On two at the bottom of the page, where it says, grants are being paid back and grants awarded to local businesses, those, we were talking the revolving loan programs or that, instead of grants, it just should be loans. And then, uh, my one, on page four, at the top of the page where it refers to, uh, the chart we showed was Ethan, it says Pepin, his last name is probably the way I speak, it was Pepin, P.E.P.I.N., I, next time I see Ethan, I, I wanna make sure that he, he doesn't think I'm calling him Pepin.
He's, he's a nice little French boy, Pepin.
Yes, yes, with, so, I'll amend my motion to accept the minutes, uh, from February fourth with those corrections.
You okay with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Five minutes for public comment?
Hello, my name's Jonathan Billwitz, I'm a resident here in Fairhaven, once again, as you all know, I am suing the town of Fairhaven. As you all know, it's a civil rights violation under the D.L.C.T. that is not covered by any insurance policy, as it is an act incurred by law enforcement. Also, the town has answered the complaint on the ninth, which I respect, thank you, um, unfortunately, I have yet to hear from Mr. Gunter, Mr. Humphreys, and Mr. Duel and their personal capacities, whereas Mr. Gunter, Mr. Humphreys has just arrived now, I was wondering if they are going to answer, Mr. Gunter, are you going to answer the complaint or the waiver of summons in your personal capacity?
Five minutes for public comment, all your comments should be made to the chair, you don't pick out individuals, we don't use five minutes for public comment to, uh, take and criticize people.
Okay, will that address that question to the board then, are they going to answer in their personal capacity?
I have no idea.
Good, thank you.
The, the other thing is, uh, usually a civil rights violation is, is covered, but it may be special.
When it's incurred by law enforcement, it is not.
Thank you for your comment.
I also have one more thing.
You got time.
On the Fairhaven Town, or, uh, yeah, Fairhaven Town Facebook page, um, comment ranking needs to be turned off, as that is a violation of First Amendment constitutional right.
That's, that's not, that's not our purview, that's, you gotta go to California and talk to, uh-
It, it's in the settings, you can shut that off.
Yeah, okay, well, we're not gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
Uh, Nathan Aiken, uh, I wanna, uh, say the sidewalks have been excellent in the last few snowstorms, a lot better than they have in the past, uh, if we could use more sand during cold bouts, because salt don't work below twenty degrees, and also that the state plow vehicles have a GPS, uh, thing where it shows a green light when they're plowing, then a yellow light, then a red light when they're too far off the road. Is there some way that we can have Mr. Gunner apply for a grant to have one of our plow trucks equipped with that, because there are some intersections that the, 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 where the intersection stops and the road's so narrow because the plows aren't plowing properly, they're swinging like they're driving a truck or trailer truck, they should be pushing it straight through, then backing up and plowing around, because they're swinging and not plowing, so the vehicles are in the middle of the lane, so another person turning in, they're not as wide as they should be at the stop signs. And I know the state has GPS-enabled red, green, and yellow lights on their plow vehicles, so if we could possibly maybe have Mr. Gunner apply for a grant to enable one of our vehicles to have this, and we can get closer to the curbs and closer to the sides of the roads, and that will help a lot in vehicle, uh, travel in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for now, thank you.
I have a comment, please, um, relative to, uh, the February fourth meeting at the end, when Mr. Travers said that he was, was about to say, um, uh, do, he looked at Mr. Gunner and said, do we have an exec, and Mr. Richards said, oh, if that's further reviews, I'm not prepared or I'm not ready. After some discussion between Mr. Gunter and Mr. Vige, Mr. Travers then continued and said, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to three, I'm sorry, one V.S.A., three thirteen A. one. And do I have a second, yes, okay, and at that point, there was some communication between Mr. Richards and Mr. Travers, where Mr. Richards said, oh, I'd like to discuss legal, Mr. Travers said, yes, legal, legal, we'll discuss legal, and they moved on. At no point in there was there an official motion, first of all, it should have been an amendment, but even at that point, there was no official motion, which Mr. Travers should have made, and in addition, um, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to one V.S.A. three thirteen A. one F, it would have been F, attorney-client, uh, communication, and somebody should have seconded it and go on from there, that didn't happen. Even though, Mr. Green, now, you were not privy, perhaps right next to the conversation, it's incumbent that any and all, especially, uh, experienced select board member not allow the board to continue without following statute, and I'd like to read very briefly here, uh, from the statute, one V.S.A. three thirteen A., A. itself, um, the genesis of all the subdivisions.
I, I think we're fully capable of reading those statutes.
No, I'd like to be-
We don't need you to read the-
No, I would like to comment for my public-
To read the statute.
This is my public, five minutes of the buzzer little egg timer hasn't gone up, it's still my time.
You can waste as much of our time as you'd like.
My time.
I'm gonna waste three minutes.
A comment to go into executive session shall indicate the nature of the business of the executive session, which Mr. Travers did, under A. one, uh, regarding personnel, and shall indicate the nature of the business of the executive session, and no other matter shall, may be considered in the executive session. So, in summation, any communication that transpired in executive session without a formal motion, particularly disclosing the nature pursuant to one V.S.A. three thirteen A. one F, possibly could be subject to open meeting, violation of open meeting laws, and is subject to scrutiny by the Secretary of State, thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're gonna move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna let other people go if they were gonna go. Roseanne Van Loon from Fairhaven. I don't know if you guys have been, um, probably not seen on Facebook, but there's been a lot of conversation about the sidewalks. And I, I just think that the board needs to make a decision, one way or the other, I think we need to have an ordinance, if you are not going to take care of the, all the, the sidewalks in the same manner, which is very difficult for the town, then there should be an ordinance that says, the people, where the sidewalk is, that person is responsible for maintaining that sidewalk. If you're not going to do that, if the town is gonna accept the responsibility, then I really think it would behoove the, the board to include in the budget, obviously, it's a little too late at the moment, but that in the future, it be included in the budget to have somebody specific for maintaining the sidewalks during this winter, one way or the other, it's, I just really think with all this back and forth that's been going on, a decision needs to be made regarding the situation, regarding that. That's just my comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna move on. Department heads, Chief?
Um, the last two weeks, we had five arrests, um, two, two for one of people, um, one for leaving a scene of a motor vehicle crash and negligent operation, I wanna commend my officer, my officer located that vehicle, pulled me, struck the house on South Main Street rather quickly, wrapped that up. We had a cattle arsonee in front of Lucy's credit card, we had a guy actually left his wallet on the counter, Dunkin' Donuts, um, and went out and somebody took it and used a credit card next door within seconds, but, again, my officer was pretty quick on getting that done, and we had one for a truancy petition. In the last two weeks, we were up fifty-eight traffic tickets, um, forty written warnings, we had five parking violations and two car crashes, uh, we had five sets of civilian fingerprints, I did a brief review of some of the highlights that we did in the last two weeks, so we had a hundred and two calls for service and we're at four hundred and fifty-four for the year. I gave you a breakdown of the revenue.
Questions for the chief?
Thanks. Very quickly, uh, I just got this from Green Mountain Power today, uh, they submitted their forty-five day, forty-five day advance notice for the reconstruction and relocation of the substation over the Airport Road, so that project's moving forward. It's changed a little bit, too, if I read that email, that they're coming underneath the, underneath the highway. Yeah, they're not using our right of way anymore, they're going up and over. And under. And under. Uh, we did a couple of trainings, uh, last week, just to give the board a heads up, we did the respect in the workplace training, uh, we invited our friends from Castleton to come over and, uh, and join us, they sent six of their employees, so, um, like we've been trying to do, things are always expensive, it's nice when we can share the cost on things like this. We also did a dump training, uh, which was free, we just did an online course, we're gonna train staff on some, uh, better practices, better practice, uh, better practices with our battery collection, so that's coming up for them as well. And the swap shop, if anybody's noticed when they're at the transfer station, what we call the old dog pound, uh, we're turning that into the swap shop, shelves have been built, um, shade- we're turning that into the swap shop. Shelves have been built, um, shade is pulling some rules, uh, will be enforced at that space, and we'll present what we think is a good option to the board's selectmen for their opinion and input, um, and approval, if you so wish. Uh, I spent some time up in Montpelier last week to testify in front of, uh, a House Committee about economic development, uh, and home construction. Uh, we talked about the TIF districts in particular, and what a, what a boon that would be for our community, small, small communities. Um, and we talked a little bit about the Skyline Project. Skyline Project is moving forward. Uh, the, the owner of the property did sign that option agreement. Um, I'm waiting for the contract. This knows, the weather's been bad, so the contractor's not here yet, but, um, as soon as the weather breaks, the contractor will be here to start that evaluation of the building. Uh, Munga Road, we, the board put that on the agenda. I got a confirmation from the state that, uh, they will, uh, put Munga Road back on our list of, on our, uh, town highway maps. Uh, we found the original, um, the original survey for Munga Road from nineteen eighteen, which they said, "Yeah, that'll, that'll do it." So that's great. We'll be able to finally, after sixty-five years, we'll be able to finally put the last nail in that casket. Um, and we have some Castletons- My time's up.
Your time's up. Sorry about that.
Uh, we have some students from Castleton University here. They wanted to talk a little, they wanted to, uh, hear, they wanted a story about Fairhaven, something maybe that folks don't normally hear. So, guys, you wanna introduce yourself?
Uh, I'm Jordan. I'm a communications major at Castleton, and I'm a junior.
I'm Madeline. I'm also a communications major, and I'm also a junior.
So they're gonna write a story about Munga Road.
Oh, cool.
And short and to the point, that's all I have for you tonight.
Good questions. I was approached by a couple of people who are up in Montpelier and said, "You pointed yourself well, and it was a, it was a pleasure to hear you." They were impressed, so you should hear that.
That's nice to hear. Thank you.
Sir?
On the subject of Munga Road being on a nineteen eighteen map, there's a, uh, foundation at the top of Munga Road at the intersection of Sheldon Road that dates back two hundred years or more. Um, has Munga Road ever been on any earlier map in nineteen eighteen?
It's, it's a good, it's a good question. It, it, you know, those things, it, it probably was there, but it never was taken up by the town. Something, that may be the, that may be the, you know, it was always some sort of a trail or something, which is all it is now. I mean, it'll be a class four road, I assume. Yeah. So it, probably, everybody knew it was a road, but somebody got around to taking it up and...
Actually naming it? Actually naming it?
Yeah, and, and actually taking the road up as a trail or whatever they called it at the time. That's official enough for the state. That's good for us.
What does that do for the town?
It, it's not a lot. It adds to our total road, uh, mileage. With the class four, it's not a lot, but it, it also means that we have to keep it maintained one season of the year, which is summer, in case anybody's wondering.
I remember that being there.
That what?
Nineteen eighteen.
Yeah. Me father was born right here. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll do some liquor licenses.
Wanna do some liquor licenses?
I do.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a second-class liquor license and a tobacco license and a tobacco substitute endorsement to Global Montello Group DBA Jiffy Mart Number Six Eight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nope, it's just amendments. Do it for now.
Motion to approve a second-class liquor license, a tobacco license, and a tobacco's substitute endorsement to RL Valley DBA Maple Fields at Fairhaven.
All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve a first-class restaurant slash bar license and a third-class liquor license to Jekyll and Hyde Inc. DBA Tomasses.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Good.
That all you got? I'll take it.
For liquor licenses, yes.
Uh, appointment of Deb Lacona to the EDC slash-
Downtown Partnership.
Downtown Partnership.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to Deb and Kona, uh, appointed to the Economic Development and Downtown Partnership Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chief, you're back on the stage.
I was managed to make a deal on the car for eighteen-three, plus the six hundred dollar documentation, New Jersey fees, so it's a thousand dollars less than I originally had proposed to you. It's like eighteen-nine instead of nineteen-nine. Um, they're willing to sell to us if you guys agree to go that route. Um, so potentially, we would go down Thursday, Friday, or sometime early next week to go grab it. Um, it's the same place we bought the last three. Pretty much successful, the one car had that one issue. It took a while to solve. For the most part, they've been decent. Um, they're good to work for. If you need parts, it's New Jersey, but we can go get them. They're, they're well-stocked with stuff that we need, so... If it was the pleasure of the board, I might could move ahead on that and then cycle out one of the old cars, um, to stay ahead of the curve.
Can we recharge her?
No, not yet.
What's the closing? Not a Ford man, huh?
So, so it looks like, it looks like two motions are, are needed here from my-
Two motions?
Yep, when I look at my T-shirt. The first motion, it would be to, I'll make a motion to approve the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars from the Police Department Equipment Reserve Fund to purchase a used police cruiser and equipment to outfit the unit.
I may need a console and a few lights, but I'm gonna reuse a light bar on this one instead of going with the interior, so I think it'll be quicker and faster to get it up and running.
Okay.
And then the markings, obviously, um, are a little bit of money, but...
Who was it? Mike?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to deposit the reserve, uh, uh, deposit into the reserve received from the sale of the Fairhaven Police Cruiser into the Police Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. So when you sell the old one, you're gonna take that money and put it in reserve.
And I do have the money. I have to pick up the money from Lily's, the car, other car to auction. I did talk to him. The check is ready. Just haven't been over to get it, so there is money coming back from the Durango, so to go in that account.
I'll say that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, gazebo in the park, or in the memorial triangle, I guess it would be, actually.
Oh, that's where you're at. Um, so last, last meeting, uh, it was brought to the board to, that the Legion would like to spend six, six thousand dollars, I believe, to install a gazebo in the memorial triangle, I think just to the north side of the walk. Um, it was recommended that we, that the board put this topic on the agenda, um, just in case people had opinions, and I think people did have opinions.
They did, yeah. At least on Facebook.
Do we have any opinions here?
Why did you point to me?
Cause you raised your hand.
Yeah. I, sensitive subject for me. In your memorial park, I think the space is very limited. Couple of questions have come to my mind when I'm trying to think of both sides of this. One, where are you going to put it? In front of the memorial?
No, where the stage is, right where the stage is jet now.
Where they usually set the stage for-
Which is in-
Memorial Day.
Which is right in front of the memorials?
No.
Or to the side, to the side. Okay, so you're still going to be taking away from that memorial?
No.
However, hear me out, hear me out. However, you also have snow. Huge snowbank out there right now. Who's going to take care of this? We need this why? What is the reasoning? Why do we need this gazebo there?
Yes, that's questions for the Legion. That's not-
Well, somebody presented it.
The Legion, the Legion, the Legions, I will, I will paraphrase the Legion, and I'll let them correct me if, if there's something, but the, the whole idea was to have something more permanent structure there so that we don't have to take it up and down every year. As the Legion ages, the Legionnaires age, there's less and less volunteers to do that. And it's, and the, the, the stage that we have now is indoor sta, is indoor staging, and so if it gets rained on, it's, it's-
And I under, I understand that. My-
Listen, I, I think the important thing is to go to the Legion, and, and if they withdraw the-
Right, but as a town, somebody's gotta maintain it.
Yeah.
It's already difficult, and I will, I have no problem going to Legion. But I think that it's important that we had, a few years ago, somebody came with a proposal to put up more memorials for those that were lost. The Iraq Memorial, there were, there's more to be added.
There's still room there.
But as somebody who marches in that parade, this is just something as the town should consider. As somebody who marches in that parade, where are we falling out to? There's not going to be space. If they keep taking up the space-
How, how do you figure that? I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just a little, I, I-
And I, I under-
I don't get it. It, you're not, you're not, it's not gonna have a footprint any different than the stage that is there for every parade now. What is the, what is the, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm taking my frustration out on you, Kelly, and I'm sorry, but I-
No, and I'm probably taking my frustration out because I am a big advocate for that stuff. You, anybody that knows me knows I live and breathe my veterans, and to take away from that memorial in any way, shape, or form. You know, we need a stage once a year, once a year, Memorial Day. Take your podium, put it there, pick it up, put it back.
I'd like to hear from other people who wanna talk, too.
I, I'm in total agreement with her.
Why?
Well, never why. Get a better stage. Get something that's easier to put up. I don't think you should take any of the space from there. It's taking away from the memorial.
But as you know, being part of the Eddie Viddy community, you had no volunteers, and we're not gonna pay-
You don't.
We're not gonna pay the town guys who are already stretched thin.
All the more reason to just take a podium.
Here's, here's what I will do. I'll bring it back to the Legion. I'm sure they'd be happy- I'm sure they'd be happy not to spend six thousand dollars, so-
Well, we have-
Why improve anything?
How, is six thousand dollars-
Wait a minute, Bob.
Yes.
Bob, that's not it.
It's not, it, it's frustrating and it's, it's-
It is frustrating.
Every time we try to do something nice, somebody comes up with some problem.
Bob, we're here to ask questions. We're not here-
Let's hear the rest. I think Nate also has something that's here.
Nathan Aiken, uh, I read the comments on Facebook, and, you know, pardon me, says, yes, I guess we have guests that show up and speak, and that they have a hard time going up the stairs to the stage we have. So, you know, pardon me, that says a gazebo, and there is, you know, there is room there on the north side, but then again, down, five years down the road, who's liable to, for the upkeep of this gazebo? Uh, so in the contract, in, the Legion wants this, why ain't a member of the Legion here at this meeting? And they stuck you, the chair-
He's right there.
I'm not gonna, I, I, I will, I'll bring it back to the Legion and-
But I think it's a conflict of interest for you, Bob, as a chair, to be a selectman, and also representing the Legion. It, it, I, I know you're already here, but it just feels to me that it's a conflict of interest.
It's nothing sinister. That's what bugs the shit out of me. I'm sick of hearing it, and I, and this is, this is my last meeting, and it's nothing sinister, but that's what I've been accused of, and I'm sick of hearing it. So here's the deal. The Legion, read the Facebook crap.
Don't talk, don't hear, smack me, Bob.
I've had it. I've had it with that crap. Now, you, you think that somebody offers to donate six thousand dollars, all of a sudden, it's a sinister act?
Nobody said that.
Yes, they have.
Well, I didn't, and you're yelling at me, and I'm not going to accept it.
There's a conflict of interest. I don't care what you wanna accept, to be perfectly honest with you.
I don't really care.
I, I think we need to, we need to come back, we need to come back to-
Acceptable behavior for a chairman of a select board meeting.
We need to come back to word.
No, I think we should-
I just asked questions. That's all I did, Bob, Richard.
Can I say something before everybody gets a little dizzy?
Too late.
Yeah, too late, Mr. Green.
Before I get my mouth in trouble.
I think it's a good idea, and I think, mainly that's why it's gonna be a, a, a garden type, you know, a good, uh, classic-
And who plants that every year?
Kinda thing.
Dave Mallory, you, sir, I don't know.
Who? Paula and Kelly and Joe.
And what Joe?
You did too, one.
Yo, Bill Gunther, Rick Grillo down it too.
No, I think, no, no, you're right. I don't, I think, no, I think we should make a motion. I-
Oh, I, I'm not, I don't, I, I can't, right now, there's enough, you don't make a motion and run right, put something on the agenda, have forty-four people say, "No, we don't want it," and then write it right through. I won't be a part, what, what we need to do is just calm down. Let's let Bob and then, let's let Bob and Rich go back to the Legion, talk about it. Sometimes we, we try to get an answer to something, and maybe it's a great idea, but we haven't put all the pieces and we can't answer all the questions.
If I was allowed to finish, I would like to see a drawing and some type of blueprint instead of just, you know, people react to a visual instead of words. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Bob.
I apologize for flipping out, but I'm, I'm sick of being, I'm sick of being accused. I could be accused of sinister acts when all we're trying to do is improve the looks of, of that particular, and improve the, the use of that.
Can I make a motion?
No. Well, you can, yes.
You can, you can make a motion, you can second it, and if the three of you wanna wear the decision, you go right ahead and make, make the decision that you've already been-
I think we need to, we have to go back to the, to the Legion and ask them if they wanna be involved with this controversy. They probably don't.
They, they should send someone else to come and talk.
Well-
The housing, that whoever, you must have a housing manager or some, most organizations-
Chuck Alvin brought it up.
And, and, and I, I think they're putting you, you two in a, you two are being put in a position-
I just think it's a good idea.
No, I don't, I think it'd add to the, I think it'd make it look nice.
I can tell you that, that, uh, what I'm seeing, I need to see a lot more before I could support, but I own only one vote. If the three of you wanna motion and run it right through, you can own the gazebo, for as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, we've done a lot of work downtown. We've added lights, we've redone the parking ride.
I think, I think you're gonna cheapen the memorial triangle by putting in there personally myself.
That's the last piece that really needs pulled together.
But that's just me.
But look what-
Okay.
Look what happens to the gazebo that is there.
Let's, let's go back to the Legion. Let me go back to the Legion.
Go back and put, let's get your ducks in a row. I think you're forcing, you wanna force it down, you could go right ahead. You force it right in.
Let's go back to Legion, see if they wanna, if they still wanna be involved in a sinister controversy.
I'm not saying it's sinister.
Bob, stop putting words in our mouths. We didn't say that.
Well, we are representing the people that are on Facebook.
I'm representing me.
Yeah, wow, okay.
Bob, just one more thing can I say? I agree with Nathan. If you had a diagram, that would go a long way for the people- I agree with Anthony, if you had a diagram, that would go a long way for the people that have all these questions.
They have all the concerns.
We've had diagrams for other projects.
Okay.
We'll talk, I'll see what the Legion wants to do.
I'd like to thank the Legion, it really is a positive thing they're trying to do and it did raise some hackles, but how often do we get an organization to say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna give you six thousand dollars to approve your community?
Right, and.
Like, I, I, I think, I, I don't use Facebook for very obvious reasons, but maybe if we, I, I agree, we all just take a breath, let it, let it go, because it is very positive.
That's my thoughts too.
It's like, like Mr. Greeno says, let's find that middle ground.
It's, it's my thoughts too, what it is, what it is, it's a, it's a little spring house type gazebo, uh, it's.
Eight by twelve or something like that.
It's a very, it's a very small version of the, Van Stan is down there now. Three or four people get underneath it with a podium in the rain, make their announcements on Memorial Day and what other, any other time of year for that.
So why not just have a diagram so everybody can see that?
I'm trying to explain it to you, please listen, it's going to be just a little.
I, I don't want, I want to see it, I don't want you explaining it.
I'm, I'm sure if you go on garden sheds and those kind of thing, places, you'll see all them, that's, that's all it is.
We'll go back to the Legions and we'll get specific and maybe, maybe they will send somebody up to.
It's, it's like a picture of the gazebo, it's the layout of it, where on the green and what bushes need to be trimmed and what way the doors face and it's just like any other private citizen when they want to have a building permit, they need a set of plans and everything else.
Yeah, okay. We'll move on. Uh, lead line loan program.
Yeah, this was, uh, if you remember, I think it was the last meeting that the young man came into the, came into the select board, he was, he was the only house in the town that had a lead, lead service line for his water.
Lucky man.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
There was, there was, yeah, Sam.
Yeah.
Louche.
I was, uh, um, I did a little bit of research, this is, this is actually just half baked right now, I, I gave a little, the board a little bit of information, but that's all I have at this point. If, if the money, if there still is money out there, it wouldn't be free for us to just, just get a loan, and we'd have to manage that money like we manage a revolving loan fund, right, so it's, it's, it's free money from the state, but we still have to manage it, there's still personnel time, so I, I will bring more back to the board when I get it.
There's nothing through the state?
We have to, they give us the money, we just have to manage it.
So basically, Joe, it's a loan, it's not like a small grant to help these folks out.
Correct.
It is, it is a loan, it's got to be paid back.
And we have to pay it back to the state.
Which is crazy, the state's the one that initiated all this and then they're forcing the homeowner down.
And the town, and, and the municipality, it's another unfunded mandate.
Yep.
Uh, that, uh.
I mean, I, get it, you don't want.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of one of those ones where if you're stupid enough to not want to, to have lead pipes in your house, then, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a mandate I think is, is worthwhile and it's not unfunded, there's loan programs.
Well, we can disagree, but, yeah. I'm just, so the reason we put this on the agenda, you're not looking for a decision, you're just telling us you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, nothing, nothing tonight, had I, had I had more time to pull, pull the program together, I would ask for maybe a decision, but I didn't, this is just the basic, basic information I have today.
And, and another thing is, if we only have the one person, they may or may not be interested in a loan kept from us, so we have to, why go through the work?
Why put tons of time and energy into something?
It's not, it's not, that's not that one, it's from the, from the shut off to his house.
That's what I'm saying.
To the water meter.
Small job.
But.
Yeah, so that's all they have.
Okay. Thank you.
Fireworks permit?
Yes, it's that time of year, C N C Fireworks brought in their application for the permit, they provided me with the check, um, I just need the board to, um, make a motion to approve it and then sign the permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks permit for, do you have the name of the business?
It's C N C Fireworks.
C N C Fireworks?
Everybody know what we're doing, where they are, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Um, errors and omissions approval.
Yeah, uh, so this was an error, this was a clerical error, um, from the listers' office. On the twenty, twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four grant list, um, the property owned by Michelle Beatty, uh, was, was added twice to the grant list for a little more than a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, so this, this correction removes the second, um, entry. So from the board, I just need the acceptance, I need a motion that accepts the errors and omissions and then the town clerk actually signs it.
I'll make a motion to accept the errors and omissions report.
I'll second that.
Finalisters?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Was the error made at the state level or here?
In our, here.
We made the error and we're fixing it.
We're fixing it.
Yeah, we're fixing it.
Munger Road.
Who, who?
How exciting, this just tickled me to death when we, when we finally got the answer to this. Um, so I talked to Ms. Carrie Alley up at the State of Vermont on Friday, just before I left for the weekend, she said all the board of selectmen had to do was provide a statement to her and the state saying that you, you are confident that Munger Road had, Munger Road had never been discontinued and that the, um, the original survey is correct, and that's, I drafted a letter, um, for the board to sign saying those things.
So I'll make a motion that we sign the letter, uh, for the state saying that we're confident that the Munger Road has never been discontinued and is a class four road.
Except, didn't you say, you don't sign, the motion says to sign.
Right.
It's, that was the, that was the one before, that was.
Well, I made a motion to sign, oh, but let's make sure to your point, the motion is to sign the memorandum. Yep.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Munger Road is back down.
Well, thank you, Joe, for hanging in there for the three years of my whining on what's going on with Munger Road.
I'm going to wait until I see it on the map.
I, I'm.
Before I, we're going to get too excited.
Looking forward to seeing it on the map.
Okay, um, parking lot? I can tell you that there's been some movement on the subdivision and the downtown designation. The planning commissioners is, has put their head down and really gone a long ways with it so far.
And I see.
Uh, I had a conversation this afternoon that the, the guy from the state who will walk us through this is, is going to come down, he's going to meet with the E D C and the Fair Island Partnership, um, to, to see how they're focused and, and how he can direct them to go so that he can sign off on their end, one of the things, well, he'll probably look at your bylaws and stuff. The other end of it is that we were really compressed time-wise to, to get all the stuff done for a March, April, um, application and the state guy said, it doesn't make sense to do that. There's another application in September, he said, you're, you're better off to wait and get everything in for September, so that's, we'll talk about that tomorrow on our meeting, but that's, we're certainly going to do that because that'll make it a lot easier. The other thing he also said is that why do, because we, we have to have additional verbiage in the zoning laws, in the zoning regs for historic downtown and for subdivision rules, and he said, why go through that process twice, you can do it in the same public hearings. So we'll, we'll have everything that we'll present to the board at some time in the future, I would say mid, mid summer or something like that, so we can get all the, the forty-five days or thirty days that we need for each public hearing, we have, the planning commission will have to have a public hearing and then the, I think the select board has to have too, and one will be an addition of the subdivision to the, to the, um, um, zoning regs and one will be the planning or the historical part of it. The historical part is two pages, the subdivision is fifteen or sixteen pages, but essentially what it will do for us, it will make it very easy if, if a developer's coming in and wants to build a large subdivision, there's a separation in the word, in the verbiage. So if he wants, he'll know exactly what he has to do, it'll be there and the subdivision rules will mark it out and it's pretty standard boilerplate stuff that everybody understands if you're a developer, but it, it'll be there and they don't, they won't have to all of a sudden be halfway through the program and find out that they didn't do something right, it'll be written out. And with the subdivision rules, we get, uh, the downtown designation as a, that's part of the requirements for the downtown designation and the, the whole idea of the downtown designation helps us with, helps developers, housing people, uh, with Act two fifty regulations, it, it lessens, it lessens the oversight that Act two fifty has on specific, um, not everything, but specific, particularly housing. So it's a, it, it will be a win-win, it's just going to be a little bit longer than we expected, but I think it'll be a lot cleaner when we're all done, that, that's the hope.
Question for Joe, with this moving out to September, we don't want to lapse where we're not able to get grants because we don't have, we didn't, did we re-up our village designation or, our village designation ran, I thought, until about June?
It'll end at the end of June.
It'll end, I, I just think, I believe in Murphy's Law and everything, if something happened, I don't want nine months of no ability to get grants, so why don't we, it doesn't hurt, why don't we re-up, it's not a, a time-consuming process, but we should get that village designation?
Let me, uh, if you don't mind, let me ask, let me reach out to the state and tell them what we're doing.
What we're doing and let them know what our concern is.
Yeah.
I know that we went through a period of time because we didn't have a town plan that we didn't, weren't eligible for grants, I don't want that to ever happen again, that's the reason for asking the question.
That was troublesome.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on the parking lot? Roundtable?
Uh, the only thing I have is, I think our guy's done a pretty decent job, Blonskow. Pretty, it was pretty hard to, to keep everybody happy, I mean, you push the snow back too far, people complain, if you don't push it back far enough, if you don't push it back in the beginning and get the complaints up front, then you got ice dams, so it's a catch twenty-two, um, it's a lot of work no matter how you do it. And I think they've done a great job, there is some, there is some training issues that we got to just work on a little bit, just not, nothing serious, just little stuff, um, but we'll get there and, uh, that's all I have tonight.
Uh, a few things, first of all, I want to thank you for all your service to the town, I know this is your last board meeting, so thank you.
I almost made it through without.
It's fine. Uh, kind of piggybacking on what Roseanne said, and you said, I think there's some improvements we can do with sidewalks, um, you know, a little bit more attention to those after kind of things settle. I think that's about it.
Uh, two items, um, one, uh, the need for some coal patch and some of the, and it's that time of year, I, I'm not just saying, everybody's got potholes, but we've got potholes. Uh, the, usually around the bridges, like the bridge going out of here, the bridge going out of town. If, I know we've been right out straight storm after storm, but boy, if we could get some coal patch and get some of our worst ones, I think it would help us out.
I think that's going to happen tomorrow.
Yeah, that one at the bridge is bad.
But, but, perfect.
I clipped it the other day.
I think also this, the sidewalk plower, maybe state or somebody clipped one of the hanging baskets on the bridge?
Yeah, it probably wasn't the state.
Okay, I noticed that the other day, I was like, ooh.
Yeah. You'll have that.
And I'm starting to get some feedback from some people saying, hey, I'm a little concerned with, uh, some of the speeds, some of our, whether it's sidewalk plowing or plow driving, and I don't want to, I think our D P W crew's doing a pretty good job, I think they're hustling to get it all done and get it done as soon as they can and we need to let them know it's okay to slow down a little bit, uh, uh, there, don't, don't be in such a hurry that we're, we're going faster than we should. That's a, it's again, uh, not finding fault with the job they're doing, but I'm hearing that, uh, there's some concern about the speed out there, so just, just take it as a data point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have.
One thing, the planning commission is going to have two resignations, um, we have, we have a volunteer to take over one, but it's right around the time when we advertise for, for, um, so it makes sense to advertise both, I should, I should have the resignations tomorrow, one person is willing to step right in and she will be fine.
Great.
And, but I would like to advertise both of them just to be on the fair side and to, to maybe generate some interest in the other. With, with that said, we, we have three people that we know, that we can count on for, uh, our quorums, um, but one person has been ill and now is going to resign and that will offer our chance to get somebody interested in that, that wants to do that, so that, I, so we should advertise that like we do every other position. The other end of that too is we have one, one person needs to be reappointed, uh, this year, so we should do that as well after, or the, this board should.
Can I piggyback on that for a second? We have a similar problem with the, with the zoning board of adjustment, with Kevin Durkey being done this year and with us losing Bonnie Rizzotti, that group has gotten down and we need to, well, you're advert, when you go to advertise, we, we really, we, we need, and I'm looking at you because you're an alternate for us on, on that, and they're, they're down real low, I don't want you to feel like I'm twisting your arm, but I'm twisting your arm if you think, think about it, but we should, we should go out and.
It's a, it's a good.
Zoning board of adjustment is, is gotten down to where it's, they can't afford to lose anyone else or they couldn't, they couldn't make to do anything.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, it'll be a good, good time to see if we can get some interest in people wanting to join up, uh, which is, I don't know, it's long hours, a hundred dollars that would get them, but anyway. All right, review of financial stuff.
Okay, I'll make a motion when we're all, all set.
Yeah, well, it depends on which one you're doing first.
I'm going to do payroll first.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll of forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to pay the warrant of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and five dollars and forty-four cents.
Second?
I'll second, yeah. Or Mike second? Mike clapping.
Mike raised his hand.
I can't hear that.
Sorry, I'm.
One hand, one hand clapping?
Yeah, running low on energy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
And the checkbook status is one million, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, uh, eight, eight, hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I'm not gonna try to do that.
And we do have an executive session?
Yes, we do. Uh, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel under one DSA three thirteen A one.
And there's, is there a confidential attorney? Is that for both of them?
That's
That covers both? I don't wanna
That covers both, yeah.
Okay, cause I don't wanna
Contrary to what someone said, it covers both.
That's what I wanna make sure. Okay, is there, all those in favor?
Who's, who seconded that? What's, what's your?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Jump in here anytime.
I was, I was way ahead of your second.
And all those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?